Welcome to the City of Treasure Island City Commission Meeting for June 18th, 2024. Thank you for being here, and I'll call our meeting to order. If you can all please join me standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is specified by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Toth?
Here.
Vice Mayor Doctor?
Here.
Commissioner Minin?
Here.
Commissioner Dickey?
Here.
Mayor Payne?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move to further in the agenda, I did just want to take a minute to acknowledge that one of our members of our Planning and Zoning Committee and our local planning agency, Linda Driscoll, she passed away earlier last week. So, we just want to extend our deepest condolences and sympathies to her family. She was a resident of Sunset Beach for a very long time, and she's been a great Planning and Zoning Board member, so she will be missed. And there's information about her services available at the Mercadante Funeral Home and Chapel website. So, again, our sympathies to her family and thankful for her service to the city. We'll move into our approval of the regular and workshop agendas. Do we have any changes that need to be made to our agenda? Yeah, is he here?
He's here.
Okay. We do have one item on the agenda for, it's Item J6, which is a temporary parking agreement with Middle Grounds Grill. And we have Mr. Kuver here this evening. And just because we have some other items ahead of that that might take some time, out of courtesy, I'd like to move that item up to, and just move it to the first item, if that's okay. Is Scott here? You hear that? Okay. So, we'll move that to J1, if everyone's okay with that. Any other changes?
No.
All right. Then we will move into Proclamations, Recognizations, and Certificates of Appreciation. We have a life-saving award in recognition of Officer Ryan Phillips. So, I'll turn that over to Chief Barkley.
Good evening, mayors, members of the commission. This is probably my favorite part of being police chief, is recognizing outstanding work by some of our employees, and I'm not going to let them stand in the back. Ryan, come on up. You can stand right next to me. Officer Ryan Phillips has been with the City of Treasure Island Police Department since April of 2023. Prior to arriving at TIPD, he served in the United States Marine Corps. Ryan is currently training to be a backup Marine Patrol Officer on the patrol boat, which leads us to today's award. On May 31st, 2024, at approximately 2:50 PM, Officer Phillips was training on the police boat with Officer Malander when they received a call for a water rescue, a woman drowning. A woman had fallen off a dock at the rear of a residence and could not get out of the water. Upon arrival of Marine One, officers noticed that the female was drifting underneath the dock and was floating on her side, regurgitating water and foaming at the mouth. Without hesitation, Officer Phillips removed his gun belt and other gear and entered the water, grabbing the female and placing her in a face-up and swimming her to the dive door of the boat to get her onboard. She was then transferred onto the dock where she was transported to the hospital for medical care. Officer Malander, based on his training and experience, felt that the observed condition of the female upon their arrival was indicative of someone who was in the final stages of drowning. And if Officer Phillips had not entered the water and taken immediate action, the female could have perished. For Officer Phillips' actions on scene, in accordance with GO 2.4 Police Awards and Recognition, I very happily and humbly present Officer Phillips with a life-saving award. Officer Phillips, he's only been with us for a very short time, but he's made a very big impact with the agency, as you can see, and already an impact on the community, saving someone's life.
Wonderful. Congratulations. Thank you so much. That's incredible.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have a proclamation for Parks and Recreation Month, and I will read the proclamation. Whereas parks and recreation are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the City of Treasure Island, and whereas parks and recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks, and whereas parks and recreation promotes time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being, and alleviating illnesses such as depression, attention deficit disorders, and Alzheimer's. And whereas parks and recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles. And whereas parks and recreation programming and education activities, such as out-of-school time programming, youth sports, and environmental education are critical to childhood development. And whereas parks and recreation is fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas the City of Treasure Island recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources, now therefore I, Tyler Payne, Mayor of the City of Treasure Island, on behalf of the entire Treasure Island City Commission, do hereby proclaim the month of July 2024 to be Parks and Recreation Month. I think that says it all. We have a great Parks and Recreation Department, so I wanted to make sure that we honored you guys with this proclamation and show our appreciation for all the hard work that you guys do and bring some attention to our wonderful programming and our wonderful parks. And especially right now, as you guys are in the midst of summer camp, that is a big undertaking. So, thank you all for your service and your dedication to the community as well. So, I'll sign this proclamation, and our Parks and Rec Department can have the original. Thank you, guys. We do not have any presentations this evening, so we'll move into public comments for non-agenda items. I have a few cards, I believe. First, we have Carrie Auerbach. Please state your name and address for the record.
Carrie Auerbach, Treasure Island Adopt a Beach, 7427 Dartmouth Avenue North, St. Petersburg. Just want to remind everybody, we got a big weekend coming up, July 4th. July 4th is Thursday. I have about 100 of these koozies left that are stuffed with trash bags, if anybody would like to get a bunch of them to hand out on the beach in the evening of 4th of July, when the trash cans are overflowing, to encourage people to either bring their trash home with them or put it in the dumpsters that will be placed off the beach area. Get ahold of me at treasureislandadoptabeach@gmail.com, and I will get them to you. July 5th in the morning, we will have a beach cleanup across the street from Waffle House. Please join us, 8:30 in the morning. And I have another one on July 7th in the evening, same place. Just hoping that everyone will get out there and do their own DIY cleanups and keep an eye on our beaches, because it's going to be a big one. Thanks very much.
Thank you. All right. I have a card from Mark Hoey.
Good evening, Mark Hoey, 225 104th Avenue, number 110 here in Treasure Island. Thank you and appreciate opportunity to speak to you tonight. I was reviewing the meeting docs along with the packet for tonight's meeting, and I was just surprised to see the amount of agenda items and almost 390 pages worth of material that you all were expected to digest in preparation for night, for tonight's activities. It seemed like a lot. And particularly in light of the fact that this week represents the visitation and presentation and selection of a new city manager for Treasure Island, which is, to me, a paramount responsibility that you all have, and we're all certainly very interested in as well. So, I was curious on the reasoning for the city administration to load up this agenda just a day before all of the candidates and the interviews take place. Now, don't get me wrong, I'm not questioning your stamina or your ability to do lots of work, but it's just a matter of focus of attention. And to me, the city manager selection process, which you will go through tomorrow and into Thursday, should have taken precedence over other activities and matters of state here. Now, I understand business has to continue on. You've got decisions that need to be made about equipment and purchases and all that. City business has to be done. I do question whether entering into another discussion on the traffic study whole thing is appropriate right now, and that could not have waited another week or two to get its own time in the spotlight. So, in closing, it also seems to me that the new city manager that's selected should have the opportunity to review and provide some level of input into this very comprehensive traffic planning process, since they're going to be the one who really takes on the burden of implementing that plan in the months and years ahead. So, anyway, my two cents, thanks for your attention, and good luck this week.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have any other public comments for non-agenda items? All right, hearing none. Before we move into Commissioner Reports, do we want to take a picture with Officer Phillips with the commission? Am I sure? Okay. I think that's a yes. Chief, you want to come up?
Chief.
I think he's not. I'm sorry. He's a focus, huh?
I did.
There goes the family.
All right. Now, we'll do our Commissioner Reports. We'll start with Commissioner Toth.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. I don't have a report tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Vice Mayor Doctor?
I do not have a report either.
All right. Commissioner Minin?
I have one item, and that is this Thursday, I believe it is, PICA is going to be having a wine tasting, I'll call it a party or a get-together at Simpatico. I'm not sure of the time on that.
6:00 to 8:00.
6:00 to 8:00. Thank you. Come one, come all.
That's great. They use our public, our city buses to offer transportation over to the wine bar from the Treasure Bay facility, so you have a safe ride to get over there. So, we will be busy with city manager selection. I'm bummed that I, we can't make it, but great event for anyone who lives on Paradise Island. Commissioner Dickey?
I'll pass on the report.
All right. I am good as well. So, we'll move on into our agenda. Actually, I did want to address the kind of agenda load question. We, when we created our schedule for the summer, we had some, we always have some commissioners who express a desire to try to thin out our meeting schedule over the summer to allow some summer vacation time. So, we will not be having a meeting the first week of July. So, this is our last meeting until July 16th. So, we have almost a month between now and then. So, while I certainly understand the sentiment about potentially wanting to kind of hold off on this, and you have some other valid reasonings there, I think that we certainly can handle the conversation and, but just as far as like scheduling-wise, we do have a lot going on right now, but we also only meet twice a month. And when we have one month, one meeting in a specific month, that, this kind of tends to happen with the meeting before and after that is a slightly larger agenda, which we all know going into that decision-making process of scheduling off a meeting in the summer, we kind of know that we'll have a longer agenda than a meeting before and after. All right. We do not have any minutes to approve tonight, correct? Okay. We have nothing on the consent agenda, so we'll move on to our items of business. And as amended, we will start with Item J6, executing a temporary parking agreement with Middle Grounds Grill.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Commission. We were approached recently about a temporary parking solution for Middle Grounds at their location. They had asked us, since we have vacated the City Hall property, if they could use between 10 to 15 of their spots during their peak hours from 3:00 to 11:00 PM on the nights that they're open. Having, you know, looked at that parking lot historically, it usually has a fair number of vacancies, so I do not believe that allowing them to use 15 to 20 spots will displace anybody who would have paid more for that parking. So, I think this is just a pure value-added proposition for the city and a way to help one of our local businesses during a busy time of the year for them. I will say also that this is a temporary agreement. This is set to expire October 31st, or whenever the notice to proceed for the demolition for the old building is granted. So, that's the, that's the termination clause on this agreement. So, it is very short-term, just until we get to that point. Don't think that it's a major, won't affect any of our traffic flow in and out of that lot, and we'll be vacated before we get to the demo portion, so there shouldn't be any lingering issues with that. As you've noticed, Scott, the Vice President, is here this evening, if you guys have any restaurant-related questions. But if you guys have any parking questions, I'm happy to take any of those now.
Mike, I do have a question. How did we come up with the amount to be charged during that period of time?
There's not really any good comparison for rates in that area. That parking lot's only been open for paid parking 24/7 in the month and a half since we've vacated this building, so I don't have any historical data to go back to. Basically, the rate that was there was a rate that was formulated based on the estimated usage of a parking space in that lot for those hours. Again, given that it's not a utilized lot, that there would be no paid parking without this agreement. The rate was, we understand the rate, you know, seems a little favorable, but I think it's fair, given the lack of historical data on that lot. To charge them more would be assuming that it would be more marketable to sell it that way. And I, without good data in the area, I'm not comfortable professionally of giving like a good market comparison for what that area is, just because we have the, we don't have data in that area. And so, trying to compare what that impact would be versus like a beach lot, it's kind of an apples and oranges, just because we haven't had the historical usage in that area. And the nearest comparable is this parallel parking right here on 106th Street behind the restaurants. And if you've ever driven down that street, those parking spots are always full, so that wouldn't be a fair comparison either to City Hall. It was just a best guess for what the usage might be, and again, because it's, we think it's 100% value-added, because it won't displace any paid parkers, that it's just extra money for the city.
And I do appreciate all the thought that you put into it. I do think $50 a week for 10, 10, do you say 10 to 15 spots?
It's 15 to 20, depending on what their, what their need is.
It just seemed like it was significantly under what, what might be, what one might have to pay if they went elsewhere. And again, I want to be supportive of Middle Grounds. It's certainly my favorite go-to restaurant for all special occasions, but I do, I do want to go on record as saying I think $50 a week was, was way too low for the, for the value that, that is being given here.
Any other questions for me or comments before we entertain a motion? We can always adjust it if others are uncomfortable with that amount.
No, I'm actually fine with it, because something over nothing is something. So, we're good.
Any other thoughts? Is that, and that's $50 for all of them? It's not $50 per spot?
Yes, because we have no real way of guessing what their utilization will be, and even though we have this new LPR system, it would just add another layer of complexity. So, we've, we've come up with a, an easier way for our parking enforcement team to monitor this one unique parking situation. And again, if we had had some historical information and we had some better records of what the parking in that area costs, of course, I, you know, the rates would have been adjusted higher. It's just not having, not having that data makes, puts us in a weird spot of asking too much or asking too little and just kind of trying to strike that balance.
And Mayor, if I may, the, my larger concern is just setting a precedent, and I understand the needs of Middle Grounds right now. And again, I do support the concept, it's just the dollar amount that I'm in disagreement on. Because if we do this for Middle Grounds now, you know, what about some of the other companies or hotels or stuff that ask for consideration for parking as well? So, that was my biggest concern, is, is how do we, how do we then turn somebody else down later, you know, later on, or charge them significantly more, because we've kind of set a precedent, if we go with a $50 a week for 15 to 20 parking spaces?
That was something that Gary and I had mentioned, the Pandora's Box of this situation. But given the time limit nature of it, that it is only until October, there is no extension, there is no, it is a very temporary thing, given the unique situation that we have in Treasure Island. And if I had, if I knew that the rates were way more and we could justify it, I absolutely would have. But I think in this situation, we're comfortable that this doesn't open that Pandora's Box for other businesses to, to start asking for similar arrangements.
What is the normal parking rate there currently?
That's, that's the same citywide rate at 375.
Okay. And that's enforced 24/7, right?
Yes, as, once we vacated the building, those parking rates were changed, because we didn't have the public business in that building anymore.
And these employees will probably be parking for about eight hours or?
From 3:00 to 11:00, given whatever their shifts might happen to be.
Yeah, okay. So, it is quite, quite a deal.
Mm-hmm.
But I'm willing to kind of move it forward and take a vote or discuss it after a motion's made, or if someone wants to make an amendment to the recommendation, what's the, will the commission?
I would not make any changes, but I'm just saying it's only three months, three or four months. So, for us to say down the road that we would do that same deal with another establishment...
We wouldn't have it.
We're in pretty unique circumstances.
I think it's a good thing for businesses in the community.
Okay. Well, I will entertain a motion then.
I moved authorize the city manager to execute the non-exclusive license agreement with Middle Grounds Grill LLC for the temporary use of parking at the old City Hall location.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion or comments from the commission? All right. Do we have any public comment? Scott, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, I just appreciate you guys helping us out.
All right. Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Doctor?
Aye.
Commissioner Minin?
Aye.
Commissioner Dickey?
Nay.
Commissioner Toth?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Back up to Item J1, second and final reading of Ordinance 2024-07, amending Chapter 38, Recycling and Waste Management. If we can read the ordinance title, please?
Yes. Ordinance 2024-07, in ordinance of the City of Treasure Island, Florida, amending Chapter 38, Recycling and Waste Management of the City of Treasure Island's Code of Ordinances by revising Section 34-4, Unlawful Practices Generally. On Section 38-5, Enforcement Procedures and Penalties to Provide for Enforcement, revising Section 38-14, Duties of Single Family Residential Customers to Improve City Access to Storage Containers, revising Section 38-15, Duties of Multi-Family Residential Customers to Improve City Safe Access to Storage Containers, revising Section 38-16, Duties of Commercial Customers to Improve City Safe Access to Storage Containers, Providing for Conflict, Providing for Codification, and Providing for an Effective Date.
All right. Stacy?
Yes, hi. So, we haven't had any changes since the first reading of this ordinance. And again, as Jen just summarized, the purpose of the ordinance is to enhance the safety conditions that our staff are faced with when they're out there doing trash collection, as well as to, there was a couple of items in there for operational efficiency purposes.
Okay. Any questions for Stacy? All right. Any, actually, I know this is second reading, so I have some different procedure I need to follow. We'll open the public hearing. Do we have any public comment on this? All right, hearing none. I'll close the public hearing, and we'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve and adopt ordinance 2024-07 on the second and final reading.
Second.
Okay. Any further commission discussion?
No.
All right. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Doctor?
Aye.
Commissioner Minin?
Aye.
Commissioner Dickey?
Aye.
Commissioner Toth?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Item J2 is first reading of Ordinance 2024-03. Can you read the ordinance title, please?
Certainly. Ordinance 2024-03, in ordinance of the City of Treasure Island, Florida, amending Section 3-4, Proximity of Establishments to Church or School Exception, by removing the 50-room requirement for hotels from the exception, amending Section 68-302, Uses permitted to Correct a Codification Error, distinguishing between, I'm sorry, hold on one second. Distinguishing between accessory uses and incidental services in hotels and motels providing for conflict, providing for severability, I'm sorry, providing for severability, providing for conflict, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date. Mayor, I see that there's an error in the title.
Okay.
And that's why my, I paused, like I did. It appears that there was inadvertently a section number that was removed from the title. And that is, in distinguishing between accessory uses and incidental uses in hotels and motels, that's amending Section 68-484.
Okay. Can that be added at this time?
No, we're going to need to renotice this.
What is the change that's being made in that section? Oh, that's the chunk of the...
It's just in the title block. There's nothing wrong with the body of the ordinance, it's just in the title block.
Right. But that section is really the meat and potatoes of the...
Correct.
No, Jen, or, no, 68-302 was, there was, that's where the...
It's 68-484.
4.
It's not mentioned in the title.
Yeah.
68-302 was the one that had the codification error.
Right. I'm saying that 68-484 is the main body that was changed with regard to accessory uses and incidental uses, and through the editing process, that section was deleted from the title inadvertently, and it needs to be added back in. And we should do that before first reading.
It's in the agenda.
Is it in the agenda? It's just not in the attachment?
Yeah.
What was actually, so do we know what was actually noticed, then?
Yes, I'm looking at...
Because I really don't want to push this out another month.
I know. I'm looking at the proof of publication, and it's not in the proof of publication.
Oh, it's that?
There's nothing we can do? Nothing else we can do?
No, only because there's case law directly... No, only because there's case law directly on point with regard to the title block. So, we can't. If it was an error within the ordinance, I'd have more flexibility.
So, this will just come back before I set the July?
The July meeting.
We are potentially, when were we potentially adding a meeting? That's at the end of July, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
What?
There aren't any other, what's the notice requirement? Like a week?
No, they have to republish.
I know, but what's the notice requirement? Like how far in advance?
I think you have to be published, I want to say, seven days prior to the meeting, but you need to back up then also for the Tampa Bay Times requirement on when they have to receive it. And I want to say it's like a week before or five days before it has to be published. So, I think we could get it published in time for the next meeting.
Okay. I was just trying to figure out if we could add this to the agenda for one of our meetings tomorrow or the next day, but?
If there wasn't a newspaper publication? And I will say, you know, so many of the ordinances, they don't require that. But this particular one, because it is dealing with a change in use, does require the two publications by statute. So, that's why we're having, because normally we wouldn't have a publication on first reading.
Okay. Who's responsible for reviewing that before it's published?
Who's responsible for reviewing the ordinance before it's published?
It seems like a pretty, yeah.
Yeah, it's my fault.
Okay. All right, then we'll, do we need to make a motion to table that or just?
It's not properly before you. So, we'll just bring it back before you on first read.
Okay. All right, item number J3, Consideration and Approval of the Collective Bargaining Agreement with Suncoast PBA.
Good evening once again, mayors and commissioners. We were challenged this year to come up with a new collective bargaining agreement between the PBA and the Treasure Island Police Department. Some of the challenge that we faced in the, just in Pinellas County is the hiring pool for many professions and especially police service has become a puddle. Every agency is fighting over the same people. Sometimes that goes out of county into Hillsborough County, sometimes that goes down into the Bradenton area, all fighting for the same people. So, what we have challenged with is defining a salary range that is competitive and fair and equitable for the city and for the officers, of course. What else we have done as a department is make the working conditions, we feel better with the rotating 12-hour shifts, the take-home car program that was recently implemented, things like that to make their working life better. But officers, of course, also need a fair wage. We had fallen behind after the COVID year because the officers took a year without any pay increases at all. We're still playing a little bit of catch-up from that. The agreement was hammered out. We started meeting in March this year with members of the PBA, Finance Department, HR Department, and our police administration to try and find some fair and equitable pay wages as well as some other items. And we feel we've come up with something that's very fair and equitable to everybody involved. And I'm happy to answer any questions about the process or anything specific.
Okay. Do we have any questions for the chief?
I have a comment more than a question. I did spend several hours reviewing the contract and some attachments and other charts that you sent me. And it sounds like you guys did a very good job working with the union to come up with a very good contract.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
All right, anything else?
And of course, we appreciate, as the fire department did as well during COVID, you worked with the city and we appreciate all you've done. I know we have some members of the PBA here. I don't know if they wanted to speak on the matter or?
I'll stay in the house.
You got to come up, Courtney. It's not that easy.
State your name for the record.
I'm Assistant General Counsel, Suncoast PBA, Courtney Young. And I just want to thank you, the police department, as well as the city HR and everybody involved. It was wonderful to work with them and we believe we came up with a very fair and healthy contract for our team that keeps your city safe. So, thank you.
Thank you. Likewise, you guys are always a pleasure to work with and I know Sasha and John well. So, thank you guys for your great leadership at the PBA. Any other questions? All right, we have a motion.
I move to approve and authorize the city manager to enter into the October 1st, 2024 through September 30th, 2027 agreement between the City of Treasure Island and Suncoast PBA.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission comments or discussion?
Just thank you for looking out and being part of our community. Appreciate you.
Keep up the good work.
All right, any public comment? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Dr.
Aye.
Commissioner Minin.
Aye.
Commissioner Dickey.
Aye.
Commissioner Toth.
Aye.
Mayor Payne.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Everybody?
Moving on to our next agenda item is J4, Adopt the Treasure Island Connectivity Plan.
So, this is one of three connectivity plans that we were asked to do for the city. There were three different areas that were identified. Again, one was Gulf Boulevard and that one was separated out because obviously Gulf Boulevard is a state road. And we wanted to make sure that whatever plan was developed to enhance safety along Gulf Boulevard was fully vetted by DOT. And we were lucky enough to have Ford Pinellas to help us do that plan to really look at safety. And they had an excellent consultant on board that helped us do that as well and to analyze all the data. And we also did it in conjunction with staff over at St. Pete Beach because we wanted to identify common themes and consistencies wherever we could with the understanding that we have different conditions within the cities and different right-of-way widths throughout our different corridors. So, this plan is not only supported by our strategic plan, but these three elements together are identified in our comprehensive plan and are supported by six different policies under recreation and open space as well as multimodal transportation. And together, those three studies are identified as the Treasure Island Connectivity Plan. So, that is why we are asking for adoption tonight if you're comfortable with the elements within the plan because the comp plan does identify that we need to adopt this connectivity plan. So, the Gulf Boulevard Safety Plan would be the first element of that plan. And at your leisure, we could amend that plan going forward and re-adopt with the other elements that we've discussed, which is that citywide plan, that's all the other areas that are not covered by downtown and Gulf Boulevard as well as the downtown plan specifically. So, a couple of things to note that have changed since the last iteration that came before you. The executive director of Ford Pinellas did add a letter of support to the plan. The approximate existing typical right-of-way widths were added to the typical sections. There was several just grammatical things and reorganization that was done so that we could have the corridor ride improvements kind of grouped together as well as the segmented improvements together. It just seemed easier to use in that regard. There was a, we had discussed an improvement that we could make in our LDR process, which was to potentially require adjacent property owners to provide remaining sidewalk outside of the right-of-way to support this plan when redevelopment occurs if needed. And that's just a suggestion. So, this, a good note to have is there's no cost impact to the city because this is a state road. Adopting this plan allows us to support their ongoing efforts to promote safety within the corridor. So, we don't always know when DOT is going to do work in Treasure Island, unfortunately. But if we have an adopted plan that shows our community support, we can get that in front of them now as well as provide that to Ford Pinellas so that when projects do come up, they know where we stand and what they've already vetted and approved that would be good to implement within our community. So, with that, I guess that said, they also don't have to do anything in this plan, right? It's their road, it's their money. It just shows where our support is. And this is Nushin Rahman. She's a principal planner with Ford Pinellas who's going to present the study with us tonight.
Thank you, Stacy, and good evening, everyone. My name is Nushin Rahman. As Stacy stated, I am a principal planner at Ford Pinellas. And today, I'm going to give you an overview of what's in the study. It's quite a long study. It might be the reason the agenda's so long if it was attached. But I'm here to give you an overview of the study and happy to take any questions at the end. So, starting out, for those who might not be familiar in the room or elsewhere, at Ford Pinellas, we are the merger between two agencies within our county. Ford Pinellas is actually a fictitious name, it's just our brand. But essentially, we are the Metropolitan Planning Organization for Pinellas County, so the Transportation Planning Organization, as well as the Pinellas Planning Council, where we coordinate land use decision-making across the county. We're quite a unique agency in that we're able to integrate those land use and transportation decisions together for our county. And overall, we are a forum for countywide decision-making on those two aspects. And in our capacity as well, we provide technical assistance to our local governments. And that's sort of how we became involved in this safety study, providing kind of some facilitation, technical assistance, and general support because we do like to see where we can see improved safety on all of our roadways. And especially with this being a state road, it's incredibly important to have that coordination across agencies. Just a quick overview on our governing board, they are represented by 13 folks who represent all 24 municipalities in Pinellas County, unincorporated Pinellas County, as well as the Pinellas Suncoast Transit Authority. And we're also supported by various advisory committees who have also been able to look at the study and receive this presentation as well. So, giving you some project background, this study began all the way back in 2022, as Stacy mentioned, in conjunction with St. Pete Beach, who took on the same study. And it was taken on because of the safety needs identified by yourselves at the city and unfortunately, in some cases, serious injuries and fatalities that you all might remember hearing or seeing that happened in this community. And overall, an early goal of this study was to provide multimodal safety improvements for all road users, whether they're bicyclists, pedestrians, or motorists. And you'll see that in the recommendations provided throughout the study. Now, a quick overview about a study like this, as Stacy mentioned, these are really just concepts that have been developed to show what is possible within the existing right-of-way within your community. Nothing in this plan that even after you adopt today is the final decision on exactly what happens upon adoption, but really just shows that as a city, you have put in the work to determine the safety improvements that you want to see and then are able to work with ourselves and DOT to help those come to fruition. So, the study includes an existing conditions analysis, which just looks at the roadway as it exists and determines the conditions of both the roadway lanes and the pedestrian and bicyclist realm. There's a safety analysis that's conducted within the study. And then ultimately, the study develops recommendations and concepts, which you are able to consider as a city and in coordination with our agencies. So, talking about the kind of multi-jurisdictional partnership that went into this because St. Pete Beach also took this study on at the same time, what this allows for is recommendations and improvements for a continuous segment of Gulf Boulevard, even though it spans across two jurisdictions. And I really want to impress upon you as the commission that this is a unique situation. It's not done commonly throughout the counties. So, we do commend yourselves at Treasure Island and St. Pete Beach for taking this on together and providing that continuity of improvements along an important state road. And because it is a state road that's managed by DOT, as Stacy mentioned, they were heavily involved throughout this process. They were present at your public workshops to answer questions and provide support. And our involvement from Ford Pinellas allows yourselves at the city to have a sort of direct line of communication to be able to be eligible for state and federal funding, which we are ultimately the conduit for in many cases. So, we were happy to be part of this process and we're very excited to see this is something that you all wanted to take on. So, kind of taking a step back, why a safety plan? You all know of some of the safety issues that have arisen along Gulf Boulevard. And as I mentioned, the study was commenced in 2022. So, at the time, we were looking at crash statistics from the years of 2017 to 2021. And in that time, there were 456 crashes along Gulf Boulevard in this study segment that was selected for this project. Of those 456 crashes, 45 of those were serious injury crashes within that timeframe. As a city, you have also adopted the Safe Streets Resolution, which is our commitment as Pinellas County to move towards zero serious injuries and fatalities. It's something that we take very seriously as the MPO, as an agency, and we know that you take it seriously as well as a city. And overall, I'll go through the existing conditions on the roadway, but there is a general need for safety improvements because of clearly the heavy pedestrian traffic throughout your corridor with your beach access and retail options. Many people crossing Gulf Boulevard, often at unmarked locations, which is incredibly unsafe for all involved bicyclists using on-street facilities because of a lack of separated bike lanes. And something I do want to note is that where mid-block crossings are present, they do see high compliance. But the key words there are where present. They could probably be or should probably be present more throughout the corridor. And that's something the study also looked at. So, giving you an idea of the study process, because it was commenced in 2022, I won't go over every single step in this, but it does give you the timeline of the study process. And what I do want to highlight is the very involved community engagement that was available throughout the study. The study received local news coverage as well, which is always a good thing for folks to be able to know what's coming down the pipeline in their community. And what I want to highlight is the last step, which is that coordination with ourselves at Ford Pinellas and with FDOT because ultimately, as a city, you're able to work with us and submit an application to be eligible for state and federal funding, which is really how these concepts become a reality in design and construction down the line. So, finally getting to the meat and potatoes of the study, what we're looking at with this study is the segment of Gulf Boulevard from Blind Pass Road all the way down to John's Pass Bridge, so right up until Madeira Beach. And while this study segment looks at these few miles of the corridor, what we did is we broke down the overall segment into three separate north, central, and south segments based on the surrounding character and context at these geographical segments. And within that, we were able to look at improvements for the various intersections within each of these segments. And that really made it a little bit more digestible and easier to see the breakdown, not only of the cost of these potential improvements, but the timeline of them, whether they're considered more short-term, midterm, or long-term improvements. Going through the existing conditions, this is your city, so I think you're aware of what it looks like out there, but just giving you an idea of it, throughout much of the segment, there are similar conditions, which involve a lack of pedestrian scale lighting, shared lane markings with bicyclists and motorists sharing the lane, very large and often frequent driveway openings because of all the resorts or rentals or retail options that you have, a center turn lane, but also a lack of a median in some cases and some of that landscape shading, which can provide comfort to bicyclists and pedestrians as well as safety. The central segment, you see similar conditions, unprotected four-foot bike lane, which is quite narrow, especially when it's unprotected. Beach access, which is where you might see some of those crossings at Gulf Boulevard at unmarked locations because folks are just trying to get across. And then lastly, the south segment, much of the similar conditions. And then you're seeing that in some cases, the sidewalk is an incredibly narrow five-foot sidewalk that are flush with the roadway, making the pedestrian feel even more exposed to the oncoming traffic, obviously creating unsafe conditions in that case. So, as I mentioned, part of the study looked at a safety analysis, which involves looking at the crash locations and the crash densities along your corridor. And this map, which is called a heat map, shows you the intensity of the crashes in terms of their number with the red areas being your, what I'll call, problem areas for crash locations. And this analysis showed that the intersection of 107th Avenue and Gulf Boulevard is the location with the highest number of crashes. And on the slide here, you also see some of the intersections that showed high crash numbers as well. And this kind of gives you an idea of potentially when, as a city, you decide And this kind of gives you an idea of potentially when, as a city, you decide on moving forward, these recommendations or submitting an application, which intersections you might want to start with if you're basing it off of crash data. Giving you an overview of the community engagement, there were two community workshops and stakeholder meetings throughout the study process. And essentially, at the first workshop, the residents were presented with this study and what it hoped to achieve. And then essentially got feedback on the improvements that they want to see. And the second workshop, the community was presented with the potential concepts that would be incorporated into the study. And the residents and community members were able to vote on the concepts that they preferred most. And that just gave us an idea of what your residents and community members want to see in terms of safety improvements. But the general feedback that we received is that where rectangular rapid flashing beacons or RFBs are present, they are seen to be very effective in safely stopping motorists and getting pedestrians across the street. There was, there were drainage issues obviously identified by your community members, which can create issues for those areas that have crosswalks or bicycle lanes. But in general, residents did want to see more crosswalks. So this might mean that those crosswalks are not only at signalized intersections, but also at mid-block crossings where those RFBs are present and can get folks across without having to make them walk even further in this heat. And resoundingly, what we heard, was there a question?
Yeah. On the, just before we started this meeting, we got an email from a resident who talked about the voting piece of this. Can you talk to us a little bit about who voted and how they voted?
Sure, at the community workshops in St. Pete Beach, went through the same exercise. The concepts that you're going to see later on in this presentation, they were essentially just blown up into large poster boards. And residents were able to take a look at the concepts and their various elements. And they did it through sticker voting. So basically, they were presented with two or three options and they placed a sticker on the concept that they preferred. And vote, the word "vote" is used because essentially that is them voting, but it was just getting their feedback on the concept that they preferred.
And I don't know if you know the answer to this, I don't know if you were actually at this session at the time they had that, but were there lots of people here? Or how many people would you say would have participated in that, in that vote?
I wasn't at that workshop, I wasn't involved with the study at the time. I don't know if Stacy wants to speak anecdotally to the, the nature of the crowd at the time.
Just as an example to answer your question on the south segment, which is the segment that this resident reached out to and specifically, there were only 16 votes cast on that specific one. And that's in the, they have pictures of those boards in the plan with the kind of demonstration of the sticky notes.
Okay, alright, thank you.
So relatively small sample size.
Gotcha, thank you.
Any other questions?
No, keep going.
Alright, thank you. So, resoundingly, what we heard from your residents was the need and desire for separated bike lanes on Gulf Boulevard. And we heard the same thing from St. Pete Beach. And we think that this was a very important piece of feedback that will heavily improve safety along the corridor. And you'll see that throughout the concepts that are recommended. So getting into those recommendations, like I mentioned, the goal of this was to provide recommendations that improve safety for all road users, bicyclists, pedestrians and motorists. And the recommendations include elements such as those protected bike lanes, mid-block crossings, narrowed travel lanes. Because I'll explain to you a little bit about how we're working with various right-of-way widths, in some case, limited right-of-way widths. And there's a need for us to essentially shuffle things around within the existing right-of-way to provide room for those bicyclists and pedestrian facilities. The study also addressed access management, because that's a major topic of concern throughout a corridor like Gulf Boulevard, where you have those frequent driveway openings. But as I present these concepts to you today, what I want to let you know is that I'm just presenting to you one concept for each, the north, central and south segment. The study or the plan shows you all of the concepts that have been developed. And ultimately, all of these are options for the city to pursue with FDOT. And we hope that you will know when FDOT is doing something on your roadway, because they were heavily involved in this project. And we are hoping to help facilitate that coordination as well. But ultimately, I'm just showing you for the sake of example and time, one concept each from each of the segments. But in general, a lot of them have similar or the same elements throughout, just some things changed up depending on the right-of-way. So speaking of that right-of-way, this is what we're working with here in the city. The right-of-way goes as narrow as 65 feet in your southern segment. And throughout, it has anywhere from 80 feet to 90 feet and at its widest, 100 feet. And as you can see here, the right-of-way widths are pretty much differentiated based on the north, central and south segments. So really, at the north segment, a lot of what you have available is 80 feet. In the central segment, you have 100 feet. So ultimately, the segments were, the concepts for each segment were developed based on the available, available right-of-way width. So the top image on this slide shows you the existing right-of-way or the existing configuration that you have. And the picture below shows you the proposed concept of what could be possible to be designed and built ultimately on Gulf Boulevard. Immediately, I want to draw your attention to that separated protected bike lane that's painted green for higher visibility. And it might be hard to tell in this image, but how this bike lane is separated is through a material called a zikla zipper, which is, think of it as like a much more significant rumble strip. It actually prevents the vehicle in the roadway lane from veering over into the bicycle lane. When we spoke to your community members, from what I know, this was preferred because it's more aesthetically pleasing than the typical flex posts that you might see throughout the county and even on Gulf Boulevard. Looks a little less cluttered. When cars hit a flex post too, they have to be like ripped out and, or repaired anyway. And so this is a little bit more of an innovative concept that doesn't take away from that safety. So any of the separated bike lanes that you see in these concepts are separated by that zikla zipper. We also have, you maintain the four travel lanes, two travel lanes each way. You have an intermittent landscape median. And then you have a little bit of a widened sidewalk in that case. And if you're wondering how you make room for all of that, given that right-of-way, it's through that reduced center turn lane. So by taking away a couple of feet from that center turn lane and redistributing it, redistributing it to your bicyclist and pedestrian facilities, you're able to create those safer conditions for those other road users. But having that reduced center turn lane also encourages the motorists to slow down when they know that they have a little bit less room and pay attention a little bit more before they make that left turn and pay attention to the oncoming bicyclists or pedestrians. This is to give you an idea of the costs, because ultimately, this is a planning study. It doesn't give you final costs of what the construction and design of, of these recommendations would be. And something I also have to add is that these costs were conducted in 2022. And it feels like this economy changes every month. So I would take these costs with a grain of salt, but it gives you an idea of what it would cost for DOT to ultimately construct these improvements. And you can see here, these improvements are itemized. So essentially, for each of the intersections or any of the recommendations that we made, we created almost like a laundry list of different types of recommendations, whether it was adding the new sidewalk or adding a mid-block crossing. In some cases, lower cost improvements, like restriping the pedestrian crosswalk, which in some cases, the paint is faded and that's creating a safety issue. And that's a very low-hanging fruit issue that can be solved. The study really tried to look at ways that we could recommend, both low-cost and kind of midterm higher-cost solutions, so that you have options available to you sooner rather than later. Something you also opted for throughout the study were some of these visualizations to give you an idea of what it really looks like to walk along this corridor. So this is facing south in the north segment of what those improvements look like. This image probably gives you a better idea of what those zikla zippers look like when you have a separated bike lane. And then lastly, kind of just an overhead view of what that looks like as well. Similarly-
Can we stop there and just get some feedback? And see if anyone has any questions? I kind of want to make sure we have an opportunity for each one of these-
Yeah, go for it.
-segments. Any thoughts or questions?
Good.
Okay. Sounds good.
I appreciate you letting me catch my breath, though.
One question, the 456 crashes?
Yes.
Were those concentrated in any particular segment?
The 456 crashes were throughout the corridor. I can go back to the heat map to show you where these crashes were concentrated. As I mentioned, 107th Avenue was where you had the highest number of crashes from those 456.
Yeah, most of those, as I looked at it, were at signaled intersections.
Yes, that's interesting, isn't it?
Yeah, it is.
So that, you know, really, that's a good point. I want to impress upon the commission that it's not just at your unsignalized intersections. It also begs the question of how you can make your signalized intersection safer. It could involve, you know, having these design elements that encourage motorists to slow down. Because ultimately, a safety study like this doesn't work to reduce the posted speed limit, but rather offer you design recommendations that make the motorists more alert, that encourage the motorists to slow down and look out for pedestrians. And then a lot of those simpler solutions like restriping the crosswalks can also help with that, because where the motorist doesn't see the striping, it could hinder them from safely recognizing that a pedestrian is there.
And there's no consideration given to distracted motorists?
There, there's, if you, I know it's a very lengthy report, but starting around on page 100 of the report, there is a really good breakdown of all of this data. And they look at it a bunch of different ways, by time of day, by lighting, by intersection, what type of crash it was, whether it was head-on, whether it involved a pedestrian. So there's a lot of interesting data here that might be helpful.
What I will add is that some of the recommendations include disseminating educational materials to your resorts and rentals, because ultimately, every person has a responsibility to be a safe driver, pedestrian and bicyclist. But we can always do more to educate folks, especially when they're visiting here and just excited, you know? They, but they should also remember to keep the residents that are crossing safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to take a second to point out the kind of difference in widths from the existing to the proposed. So the sidewalk would be reduced from nine and a half feet down to six feet. That bike lane would be a new thing that we don't have in this section, which would be a five-foot bike lane with a two-and-a-half-foot buffer. And then the travel lanes would be, one of them currently is 13 feet and one's 11 feet. Those would be going down to 11 feet and 10 feet. So two feet off of one and one foot off of the inner lanes. And then the turn lane in the middle is going from 13 feet to 11 feet. So just to make sure that everyone kind of sees those differences. And I don't think that there's a really big difference there. So I think that's a big win to be able to have a dedicated sidewalk and a dedicated bike lane there, which is nice in that area. I know we won't, we don't have that luxury in some of the other spots, because we don't have the right-of-way widths.
Just to follow up to that, the, from the north segment, the current right-of-way, their usage is 69 and a half feet. And the right-of-way is 80 feet and the plan calls for 73 feet of that to be used, so it's-
So we'll need to kind of utilize some more of the right-of-way that's not being used currently?
Yeah, and that's the question as to how much of their right-of-way is currently being used?
So in the case of this study, nothing, none of the recommendations require acquiring more right-of-way width. A lot of those concerns from the utilization comes from those driveway openings and the businesses that are adjacent to the, the right-of-way there. So when it comes time for design and engineering, that's where those nitty-gritty details are addressed a little bit more as to how you can maximize that utilization within the right-of-way that DOT has.
And how many current establishments utilize part of that right-of-way as their parking?
I'm not sure of the answer to that, but that is where those access management considerations come in and where coordinating with the businesses when it comes time for design and engineering for any of these recommendations. It's a very valid question, because where you see land uses encroaching upon the right-of-way, it's important to be able to see where, what DOT actually has available to, to use and implement these safety recommendations.
Does DOT get involved at all in right-of-way usage by private business?
Yes.
And how do they, do they condone it? Do they license it? How do they handle that?
I'm not sure of that answer completely, but I do know that they work with adjacent property owners and have to let them know that they're about to do work outside of their property. So when it comes time for any specific construction, that communication should be there.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, any other questions on the north segment? Alright.
Moving on to the central segment. So again, the image at the top is what's existing. And then the image at the bottom is the proposed concept. As you might have recalled from the right-of-way width, the central segment is where you have some of the most space with 100 feet of right-of-way. And so a lot of it is similar, what's in front of you. But I think the biggest difference is that there's even more separation between the separated protective bike lane and the adjacent sidewalk that's buffered with a five-foot landscape buffer, giving you some shade trees for the pedestrians and the bicyclists and giving the pedestrians even more room in between the travel lane and the bicycle lane as well. And then a lot of what's there is similar, that 11-foot center turn lane. In this case, you have room for 10-foot sidewalks. This area, you really have the opportunity with the right-of-way width to have kind of space for everyone, is the way that I would put it. And then again, in front of you are some of the, the planning level costs, to give you that idea. And then some of the visualizations of what that looks like. And you can kind of see, this one gives you a good example of what happens to the bike lane at a driveway opening. On the right side of the image, a bicyclist is kind of going what can be assumed to be a driveway opening. The zikla zippers kind of go away at that point, but the striping remains. And that kind of dashed green striping is more of a visual cue to the driver that this is still the bicyclist lane. And then that's the overhead view. And Mayor, if you'd like me to stop there, I can see if anybody has any questions on the central segment.
Sure.
Same comment?
Yeah.
Noted. Alright, and then the south segment is where you have some of the most narrow right-of-way width with 65 feet. That's not a lot of, a lot of room to work with. So the options there are a little bit more limited. But something that we did make sure to include was that separated bike lane, because it's not impossible to include that in this right-of-way. So that's still separated with the zikla zipper. And then you still have six-foot sidewalks. When I was presenting this, these concepts to our technical coordinating committee at Ford Pinellas, we heard complaints about the very narrow four-foot sidewalks and how especially if you're a parent with young children, you do everything you can to keep them away from the side of the roadway. And something that we really wanted to prioritize in this study was making sure that those sidewalks can at least be widened for a safer experience for the pedestrians. So in this concept, the center turn lane is not there, as it is the same with your existing conditions. And that's simply because of the limited options that you have. But the concept, the concepts in the study do include options for a center turn lane, but they would require a lane repurposing and much more coordination with FDOT. But I did want to note that while this concept does not include a center turn lane, it's possible with more work and more money and a lane repurposing that is included in the report. These are the costs for the south segment alternative, again, just giving you an idea of that. And then kind of the visualization of what that looks like when you're walking on the street. And then lastly, that overhead view, and I can stop there if there are any questions.
Yeah, so on this one, one of the like, concept alternatives was one lane in each direction with the turn lane in the middle and that designated separated bike lane, which allows people to kind of turn. So can you walk through kind of the rationale of why this design was kind of preferred over that one from a technical perspective?
Stacy will take this one.
I know there's trade-offs there, like you have the, obviously the negatives of going down to one lane. We have just discussed that in our downtown area, one lane in each direction. This does fortunately have a turn lane in the middle, but nobody's ever a fan of lane reduction. But this, it would provide more protection for the bikers. So just kind of talk through the, how that was prioritized or decision was made.
So again, you all will, will make that decision. So it can be however you want it to be tonight and going forward in our communications with DOT. So I want to say, when we were working with FDOT on this study, they were like, we're glad you're doing this now, because we have a resurfacing project coming up. And we were thought to believe that that was really soon and that we might miss the opportunity to finalize this project prior to that. But come to find out more recently, we're looking at like an FY '26, I think, state year, for them actually to do that resurfacing in the south segment. And that goes through St. Pete Beach up to about 99th Avenue. And the only reason that it came back to our attention after our communications ended drafting this report was because there was requests from the city to do utility locates. And we were like, hey, what's going on here? So we started to talk to them again about this study and we put this- So we started to talk to them again about this study and we put this study in front of them. That's when we started talking about sea dogs and the crosswalk there that we've been trying to get for a long time. And we also kind of put these other improvements back in front of them. You know, here were the alternatives that we discussed, we were making this plan. And it was like, well, we've had this resurfacing planned for a long time, it's been in our work plan, you know, we probably don't have money to do all of these things right now. So that's kind of the struggle that we have in looking at this is one, we did hear a strong opinion from our community recently about the feelings about not hindering traffic as well as DOT's side of things. This was a planned segment, you know, project that we have and we have limited funds and we're going to try to do everything that we can, and we're going to continue to push that anytime that we know there's a project coming up. And for this recent one, it's really up to you all how you would like to take that from here.
And I'd like to comment on that, too. When I was campaigning to run for city commissioner, I got a lot of pushback on the plan to go from four lanes to two lanes there. And I've talked with a lot of people, including some of the businesses there, and I have yet to talk to any individual who wanted to go from four lanes to two lanes there. So I, you know, my preference is to go with the preferred alternative that's shown on here. The person who sent us an email before we came in here lives outside of that zone, outside of this south segment.
Something I would like to add as well is that the study or the plan includes all of these concepts as options, but it's just that, they're just options. So when you adopt this plan, you're not deciding today whether you're going for this preferred concept that's in front of you or whether you're voting for the lane repurposing. A study is just meant to show you what's possible within your roadways, and it gives you the pros and cons, the benefits to the safety of a lane repurposing or not. So I want to make it clear that when you're voting on it, you're just voting on adopting the plan with all of its recommendations that can then be discussed with DOT later on.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on that section?
I think that addresses kind of a lot of the concerns that were brought up in this email. It was mentioned that at that public engagement session that more votes were cast for the plan with two, one lane in each direction and a turn lane in the middle. But there, again, sample size was 16 and there were one, two, three, four, five, six votes for the preferred plan, and then there were nine votes for the one with two, one lane in each direction and a turn lane. So yes, that had more votes, but in the grand scheme of things, we can't really make a decision based on a vote of 16 people. We need to listen to our experts, use our own critical thinking and kind of, like you said, also, just because it's, that's the preferred one, there's still these alternatives. So when it comes down to actually discussing that with DOT, they're going to have something to say about it, too, I would imagine, because they're the ones that the funding is coming from.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on the south part? All right, thank you.
All right. So home stretch here. Today, we are requesting adoption of this plan, and I think the bit that I explained right before this kind of gives you an idea for all of these segments and the entire plan, you're adopting the plan as it's been written, the work that's been done, the data that backs up all of these concepts and alternatives, and they are just alternatives for consideration later on. It just shows that you put in the work to consider the safety implications for the recommendations and improvements throughout the segment of Gulf Boulevard. So when we, several weeks back, as we were wrapping up the study, we got all of ourselves at a table on Treasure Island, St. Pete Beach, ourselves at Fort Pinellas and FDOT, and we just asked both cities to kind of tell us about the areas that they might think are priorities. And as the crash or the heat map showed you of crashes, one of 7th Avenue was where you had the highest density of crashes. So in speaking with Stacy and the rest of the team, that was kind of identified as what could be an initial priority. And so how this moves forward with next steps, you as a city vote to adopt this plan, and then from there, over the next year or so, we're able to work with the city of Treasure Island and as well as the city of St. Pete Beach to submit an application for what's called our project prioritization list, which are a list of projects all throughout the county where these projects are eligible for federal funding. So ultimately, for a project to come to fruition, it has to be on this list to get that federal funding. And then similarly, the city, yourselves, are able to work with DOT to move projects through their project prioritization as well as what's called push-button contracts, which are kind of like lower-cost, low-hanging fruit types of projects. And the study advantageously actually includes some of these recommendations for that very purpose, to be able to move through some of these safety recommendations without having a massive construction project because some things can be fixed quite quickly if the resources are allocated properly. And then as a city, you also always have the option of learning about grant opportunities and pursuing those. In the case of many grant opportunities, sometimes at the federal level, at the state level as well, they involve a local match. So in that case, you would have, you would be expected to put forth your own local dollars towards that. So there's pros and cons to that. You know, obviously, that's money that comes your way, excuse me, that comes your way, but you're able to put your own money to advance some of these projects. So these options are all available to you, and I'm happy to take any more questions that you have, but ultimately, we're looking for adoption as a result of this.
Well, I think the question that I'm asking is that the Treasure Island Gulf Boulevard safety study is what you're looking at getting approved, correct?
I'll let Stacy answer that.
So it's called the Treasure Island Connectivity Plan because the way that it's referenced in our comp plan is as a citywide comprehensive connectivity plan, but the only part that's being requested for adoption is the Gulf Boulevard plan, correct?
Okay. So Stacy mentioned at the beginning, so we have those three components. The other two haven't, aren't ready yet. We haven't fully fleshed those out. So when we adopt it tonight, it's only going to include this part, the Gulf Boulevard. And then later on, we're going to amend the connectivity plan to add on to the plan those next two sections.
Okay. Right. I have no issue with that, and I actually like the plan.
I do, too.
Was that correct summarization?
That is correct. Thank you.
And just for clarification, I know the answer to this, but just for the official record, the cost that you shared with us, these are mostly going to be absorbed by Department of Transportation. Is that correct?
So the idea is that we could support, I guess, grants that they may go after, or if we wanted to get something done faster, we could put forth a match towards a grant. But the way that we're foreseeing this to be is these are DOT projects, and we're just showing them that we support them in enhancing safety when they pursue their normal course of, you know, treatment work, yeah.
Thank you.
There's also a list in here somewhere of potential funding sources, right?
Yeah, that just is meant to give you an idea of all the options that are available to you, because sometimes waiting on the list of state and federal funding, it can take a while. There's a lot of projects on those lists, a lot of priorities throughout the county. So you're not limited to those options, but those options certainly save you your city's dollars.
Great. All right. Any other questions for this staff? Great. Thank you guys so much. All right. Well, I'll entertain a motion then.
I move to approve and adopt of the Treasure Island Connectivity Plan.
Second.
All right. Do we have any further discussion or comments? All right, we'll go into public comment. I have one card from Kim Matthew.
My name is Kim Matthew, 225-104th Avenue. Well, now I don't know what I'm going to say because I thought I had it clear in my mind where I was going with this, and then seeing all of this has kind of changed that. I have a few concerns, and I guess as the projects come down the line, we might be addressing them, but I'm hearing about tightening up some of the lanes. Those lanes are tight as they are, as they exist right now. So I'm wondering how we are going to fit that in. I'm concerned about the driveways for a lot of the existing, you know, little small, smaller hotels up and down the Boulevard or the, yeah, up and down that street. So it just feels like we're kind of shooting after a lot of unknowns, and I don't know if that's how it should feel, or these are just big ideas and we'll hammer them out as they go. I mean, I guess I need some clarification on that because it feels like a very big project, and we're saying yes to a very big project, but we don't really know how it's going to turn out. I guess that's what I'm saying. I don't know if that makes sense, but...
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have any other public comments? Mark? Sure.
Thank you, Mark Hoye, 225-104th Avenue in 110. She's in 210, so just to clarify that. Yeah, you clarified the one thing. We're not being asked, the city commissioners are not being asked to approve the A, B, and C. B and C is in that, still requires work. That's great. I think that's appropriate. But I am a little confused because at one point, we were talking and saying, the DOT controls this, this corridor. So what does the city have to say about those if you decide, or this DOT comes in and says, okay, we're going to push back those right-of-ways, either by purchase or by other means? Does the city have a means to address that? So it seems like we're approving a plan that is really not in our hands. It's in the hands of the Florida DOT primarily as to just how far they want to push that. Anyone who's driven, biked, or walked along Gulf Boulevard from end to end here knows the challenges with limited right-of-way and access to all these businesses. I'll point out, you can look right across the street here to the Eye Beach Resort, and their parking spaces literally rest at the end of what is supposed to be the sidewalk. Nobody walks there in their right mind because you're squeezed between the bike lane and the cars. But that's all the way up and down Gulf Boulevard and ours, so huge challenge. But I guess I'm just asking you guys and gals to think about, I guess we're going to sign off on it and say, we support it in concept, but really, we're not at the point to put money into it. It's about 15, 16 million two years ago, three years ago, so we know it's more now. Is this where we want to spend future money or even budget future money? Or do we really look at the DOT to ultimately, over a large expansive time, come up with the funding to do some of these safety-related ones? And believe me, I'm all for the safety-related ones. That would make it a little easier to live with, but I don't know how much control we'll ultimately have, and that would be something I think you should consider in your decision. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Sure.
I'm Diane Hawkins at 11385 8th Street East, and my only concern would be, or I suppose, Mayor Payne mentioned it, common sense, there's no substitute for that. So this is, of course, an FDOT plan, and because they have the money, they will have the power. And so we just need to be very cognizant of pushing back where their ideas conflict with our common sense. And Kim Matthew mentioned about tightening up the lanes. Oh, that frightens me because as any of us know, when we're driving along, we're trying to be patient, enjoying that we live in a beach community, respecting that. So a lot of tourists, people coming in and out of the driveways, having that little extra bit of room allows you to move over a little bit and stay out of the way and not rear-end a bike, you know, a vehicle, a pedestrian. If we tighten up those lanes any further, we are reducing that comfort to be able to move out of the way in an emergency, else we collide into the car in the next lane. So these are very important things. One thing that struck me, and then I'll be quiet, last month, we had a very unfortunate situation where the district fire chief of St. Pete Beach was actually arrested and put on administrative leave. I actually feel very sorry because he must not have realized that he was driving in a shared mobility lane, right, between vehicles and bicyclists. And he, it seems to me, became annoyed at the cyclist and said, get out of the way, when in fact, there was not a designated painted line that would indicate that there was anything that the cyclist couldn't move into the vehicle lane. And so this fire chief became irate, little road rage, and wound up getting back in his truck and nudged with his pickup this cyclist. And that, you know, after that, there was this argument that ensued, and it was a very unfortunate situation. But we see that happening because we don't have protected bike lanes. It's a disaster for everybody involved, and it will change lives when these incidents occur. So I want to really, again, say, we need to be careful and consider that there is a human factor to all of this. It's not just about, oh, there is enough room for a vehicle, there's enough room for a pedestrian. We have people who are used to driving. We have, there's an emotional reaction to a lot of things. We're not robots, so we have to take into account that human beings have to share these spaces, and we have to make it very clear where each person, where each, I guess they call it micro, anyway, where vehicles, pedestrians, and bicyclists are supposed to be so we don't invade each other's space and we can all kind of live in harmony and safety.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments? Any other comments? All right. Any follow-up from the question? I just wanted to kind of touch on the concept of a plan to address Mr. Hoye's concerns. I think that this is, like the other plans that we're considering right now and going through, and to your point, is well-taken, that we do have to work with DOT on this. This is a plan that we can use as ammunition when we are working with them. And these big state agencies do all have, and a lot of our agencies here, Fort Pinellas and a lot of the other government units around, around the state, the county, even some other cities that are larger than ours, have designated positions for people for intergovernmental affairs. And it's their job to work with other agencies to make sure that we're all accomplishing goals and rowing in the same direction and making sure we're working well together. So we have a great team here that knows a lot of people around the county, has good relationships at Fort Pinellas. So even though this isn't something that we are going to be able to directly execute alone, it's something that we can utilize when DOT does reach out to us with their intergovernment affairs people and talks with us about what we would like to see. They're not going to ramrod something through with us, and that's the beauty of having worked together with DOT on this plan, is that we have a document that shows we worked with your staff to come to this plan. So they should bear, kind of give that some extra bearing when they're deciding on their plans for the actual projects. So it's just a plan, and it's something that we can use and have in our tool chest when we are talking to DOT and trying to advocate for our best interests. And then the minimum lane width, I wanted to ask, is there like a standard minimum lane width that's recommended? I just Googled what the average width of a car is, and it's five feet, eight inches. So if we're talking about 10-foot lanes, that still gives quite a bit of buffer room on either side of the car.
Yeah, there's a lot of things that go into consideration, the type of road, the traffic volumes, the design speed, and all of those things. But one of the things I did want to point out is that not all the preferred alternatives reduce widths. In fact, the central segment is reducing the, I mean, increasing the outer lane width. So it just depends on the segment that you're looking at. And the other one, I think it was six inches on either side, which is, I think, on the north end provided now because it's a shared bike area. There's a six-inch difference. Yeah, so but, but right now, you're sharing it as a bike lane, so no crash is a good crash, but if you're going to have the extra buffer, the extra, you know, a car-to-car collision is a lot less dangerous than like a car-to-bike collision. So it's just where you're providing that extra foot or that extra six inches.
It's funny, you said about, you Googled, how wide is a typical car? I Googled how wide is a semi-truck? And it's eight and a half feet. So if we have 10-foot lanes down here on the south, then that's nine inches on either side. So if you have two, I mean, there's not a lot of room. of room. So, and I know we don't have a lot of room to work with, and that, those shorter or less wide lanes are coming at the expense of wider sidewalks and wider bike lanes. So, I get what you say there. But yeah, let's do, take a look at those there, because I'm concerned about 10-foot lanes down on the south end as well.
Yep. And we do have some 10-foot lanes throughout the corridor right now. So that's not a big change. One of the things that DOT uses, and roadway designers in general, I know that we want to keep traffic moving, but when you're trying to get people to adhere to lower design speed, like a 35 mile an hour road, that removal of six inches or that putting up that tree actually affects people in a way that makes them adhere to the speed limit more so than not, because it just has that feeling of being more closed in and actually helps to have compliance with speed limits.
All righty. Anything else?
No, I've just looked up an RV, and that's 8.6 and 10 feet. So, on the other hand, with that, are there studies that show that the narrower lanes are safer? Is there?
It's a give and take.
It's a give and take.
At a slower design speed, like 35 miles an hour, I think it's more preferred than if you had, you know, a highway coming through here, obviously.
Well, yeah. Because it's a speed thing as well.
All right. Good to know. All right, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Dr.
Aye.
Commissioner Minnie.
Aye.
Commissioner Dickey.
Aye.
Commissioner Toth.
Aye.
Mayor Payne.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you to the staff. Lots of hard work. This has been a long time in the making, so congratulations and thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Sure.
All right. Next item is J5, approval of a work authorization with advanced engineering and design in the amount of $109,598.40.
Very specific number.
Mm-hmm.
So this, as a staff, both in the Public Works Department and in the Community Development Department, we are receiving a lot of requests for preliminary reviews of plans and ideas when it comes to development work, whether it be seawalls, or houses, or multifamily commercial buildings that are planning to pursue terrain modification under the proposed ordinances that we plan to bring before you in the coming months. And so, we want to be sure that we are giving adequate guidance, and that our review engineers who view our permit applications are prepared and are evaluating these projects appropriately under our program. So we have a work authorization request before you that entails four general tasks. The first task is to assist in those plan reviews, to support the initial launch of the program. So those could be pre-application requests that we get, as we have been getting, to be able to, as staff, we don't always have the time to go through that large technical review that's needed, to give people guidance on what may or may not work on that site. And this task also provides the QC of our reviewing engineers, just to give them the opportunity to go through the first few, to make sure that they're looking at restricting site conditions, that they've all seen one in a coastal A-zone, that they've seen a single-family, and the differences in how we permit seawalls versus a house that's elevating. So it's just to get through those first few to make sure that everyone's looking at it appropriately, and if there's lessons learned, we can share those with the other engineers as well. The second task is to develop standard specifications and construction details. This will be very helpful for both the people who are applying for permits and the people who are reviewing the permits. We have a lot of circumstances throughout the city, even today, when someone submits a permit application for work that touches the public right-of-way or public utilities, they're oftentimes referring to specifications in other jurisdictions. You know, even though it's our infrastructure, they could be referring to the City of St. Petersburg or Pinellas County standard details. We want to make sure that, especially when we're looking at elevating and transitioning back through the right-of-way, that they're adhering to a standard specification that we're okay with, and not having them have to develop something from scratch each time, or for us to have to review something different each time. So we hope that having that performed and available to them and to us will make reviews and applications simpler. Task three is the development of a video script and a video overlay. Part of the work that we had the engineering team do when looking at developing the terrain modification program was a set of renderings, and Catherine and I have been reviewing those renderings. And that shows a lot of these different circumstances that we've discussed, the different development types, the different restricting conditions on a site, and the different flood zones that may be impacted. So we have these really great renderings, but we think that they would be much better if we could put those to just a video. And it's not going to be like a fancy video, because we're actually going to develop that video in-house. But what it will do is it'll have an overlay where you can pop up and say, look at this, like actually have an arrow, this is what this is doing, and this is the site restriction, this is why you have to have a swale here, or this is what the retaining wall would look like, this is how you tier your driveway slopes under this condition. So we just think that the level of education would be greatly increased by providing that additional overlay to those renderings that we're finalizing right now. And task four is something that we budget for commonly, and this is just authorization to access those funds, and that's for stormwater grant writing and administration. We do have some grant opportunities coming up, and we just want to be prepared with information to be able to submit grant applications for our stormwater projects. The one that we have discussed and that we'll be getting into more detail soon is the commission's preference on whether or not to proceed with stormwater improvements on the West Causeway, and which route you may be more interested in taking there. So we want to be able to hit the ground running with those requests for grant funds. So, the total for task one is just over $39,000. $20,000 of that we're proposing actually be redirected from an authorization that you gave staff recently in March for as-needed, actually, I think that was supposed to be May, I think it was May 26, for as-needed civil engineering services. So instead of using $60,000 that you authorized, we'd be redirecting 20 for this other purpose. The difference there that I do want to point out is, when you did approve that $60,000 for the plans review, a lot of that was reimbursable under fees that we collect. This is not reimbursable, because this is additional review on top of the engineer's review to support that pre-program and slightly post-program implementation. The other $19,340 would come from non-departmental contingency to cover task one. And then for tasks two, three, and four, which totaled just over $70,000, that would come from various public works accounts. And those are line itemed out for you from wastewater, municipal services, stormwater, both for engineering and professional services. So we're available for any questions that you have.
All right. Questions? Commissioner Minnie?
The contract says lump sum.
It should not say lump sum.
It does.
Thank you for catching that. All of our work authorizations that we do, and I apologize for missing that, are invoiced to us on a percent complete basis, and they're on an as-needed basis, too. So when you look at task one, even in the work authorization itself, it's as-needed services, and those are billed out at an hourly rate. Yep. So lump sum is incorrect, and I can go and strike that through before approving this work authorization. Thank you for catching it.
Okay. Any other questions? Nope. Good catch. All righty. So with that, with that change, do we have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the work authorization with advanced engineering and design for
Second.
All right. Any further comments, discussion?
Does that motion include the deletion of lump sum?
Yes. Okay. Okay. Any public comment? All right. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Dr.
Aye.
Commissioner Minnie.
Aye.
Commissioner Dickey.
Aye.
Commissioner Toth.
Aye.
Mayor Payne.
Aye. All right. Thank you. Item J7 is an agreement for wastewater services between the City of St. Petersburg and the City of Treasure Island.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. As you're well aware, the City of Treasure Island has a wastewater collection and transfer system. We transfer that wastewater to the City of St. Petersburg. We have an agreement with them that lasted 10 years with no problems. We went through a pretty rigorous review of that, the new agreement, which is going to, the old agreement is expiring in July 28, 2024. So the next 10-year agreement, we went through a pretty rigorous review of it, and I'm going to present some of the changes that were made during that review. The City of St. Petersburg agrees to provide, and Treasure Island agrees to pay for wastewater services during the term of this agreement, which is, again, 10 years, in accordance with the terms and the conditions that were set forth in the agreement. The City of St. Petersburg will treat the total wastewater flow generated from Treasure Island up to an annual average daily flow of 1.57 million gallons per day. The following are a list of changes. Total sewage flow reduction from 2.8 million gallons per day to 1.57 million gallons per day. This was calculated by taking the city's daily average flow and adding 25% for growth. You're going to see a big change in the 2.8 down to the 1.7. That is because we're not using it. And what it does is it takes the City of St. Petersburg total volume of what they can handle from other facilities, and they have to limit that 2.8 to us. So bringing it down does not restrict us in any way whatsoever. We have a 25% buffer. You're probably thinking to yourself, well, what about development? We went through what we thought were the maximum development that could happen on the island, which would be over here downtown, and also on the north end. That would be the only large developments that we have left in the city. We calculated those up, and it did not go over the 25% growth. However, each of those projects, when we get the estimated flow from the contractor, we'll check it to our daily average, and then if we need to, we will ask for an increase. We've already talked this scenario through with the City of St. Petersburg, and they have agreed that that is a reasonableness for us to do that. We clarified the-
Is that amount what we're charged based off of? Or are we charged based on actual?
We're charged with actual flow. We have two meters, they're called mag meters, and those mag meters are totalized every month. And what we do is we, it's on a SCADA system, so they'll tell us the date and time. We look at it, they look at it, and we agree upon those numbers. We have never been off more than a gallon. So, those are very, very accurate. They're mag meters. We're responsible for them, and we calibrate them. I shouldn't say calibrate. We verify them every year, and then send those verifications letters to the City of St. Petersburg. There are two of them. One is at both master pump stations. Master pump station, the main one, and then you have a master pump station, which is pump station number four, which I'll talk about later, in just a little bit, which is in paradise.
So basically, that 2.8 that was in the previous contract, that allowed us to provide that much flow if ever needed.
Correct.
But, so what's the benefit? Was that a request that St. Petersburg made in this contract?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Just to bring it more in line with the accurate number of-
Right. That was a, that was a, something that we talked about on a regular basis, probably each one of our meetings that we had, which I can count up five or six of them that we had, at least.
Okay.
It's gone through, I think, probably the last year, you know, we've been talking about this.
I also just want to point out to the public, and make sure that you are comprehending that number, 1.57 million gallons of sewage per day.
That's incredible.
Per day.
I'm just curious.
Think about that.
With all the relining that we're doing on the laterals and all the sewers, are we seeing any reduction in the amount that we're sending over to St. Pete?
Okay. That is a very hard question to answer, and there's a lot of different techniques to determine infiltration. What we do is a very simplified and not very accurate infiltration rate. What we do is we take the potable, we take the sewage that leaves the city, compare and divide it by the amount of potable water that comes into the city. The difference in that is what we call infiltration. Okay? We see it bounce day to day, week to week, month to month, year to year. Some years, we're at 1.47, meaning 47% is coming from infiltration. And we're continually spending $300,000 to $400,000 a year, plus we've gotten one $1.05 million grant. All the years that we've been then relining, we got to 27% of our lining accomplished in the city. With the $1 million, we're up to almost 47%. So we have 53% left to do. So it's very important for us to continually pump that money into relining. We have just finished, I'm not going to say we finished up on Gulf Boulevard. We have, I think, five more laterals on Gulf Boulevard to do. The laterals don't, each one does not really affect the flow, but when you start putting in, I think we had 110 laterals on Gulf Boulevard to line, all those combined up probably was about a 1% because of the amount of mileage that you take. So it takes a lot of money to start getting that reduced. Some of the other things that we've done to reduce infiltration is all the watertight lids that we put out. We're the only city that I know of that has pump stations, lift stations, in the street. There's, I think we're the only one in the state that has them. You don't normally put pump stations in a street, because that's the lowest part of your system, of your roadway system. In your drainage, everything's going to go right to that, to the top of it. So that has probably done another 2% or 3%, which would only occur during the rainfall and heavy flooding and high tides. Did that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. We clarified some language that was added regarding the joint pipe ownership from the Causeway Isles to Pasadena. As you know, or you don't know, on the Treasure Island Causeway at 79th Street, there's a big vault there. Inside that vault, the City of St. Pete Beach and the City of Treasure Island meet. And we then, we have a 24-inch combined header that goes all the way to Pasadena over around 72nd and 1st Street South. First Avenue, I'm sorry, 1st Avenue South and 72nd Street, in that area is where we pump our sewage to, which then gets pumped to the Tyrone Mall. I can't remember the name of that, the plant, but it's the one over by Tyrone Mall. And there's other, there's three other, it's us, Pinellas County, and Pasadena and St. Pete Beach. So four communities use that same pump station. Another reason why they wanted to lower our limit so that they could expand in other areas. We clarify, okay, language is added to clarify that St. Petersburg may have liability for any damage done to TI system. If they do something to, let's say, block off all of our flow to them, and it damages our pumps or pipes or anything else, they're liable for that. They have to contact us, tell us they're going to do maintenance, so that we can shut down our system. They always do that. We've never had a problem, but we put language in the agreement to make sure it happens. Language is added to clarify payment will be handled in accordance with the local government prompt payment act, in accordance to law. We remove the restriction that Treasure Island cannot change its users less than the rate of St. Petersburg.
Charge.
I think that should be charge.
Yeah.
Yes. It looked like charge change. Yeah, charge, its users less than the rate of St. Petersburg. It'd be silly for us to do that, because we wouldn't make any money. It'd be silly for us to do that because we wouldn't make any money. 10-year contract with annual renewals thereafter. It was 10 years with a 10-year renewal. So we'll study the, in 10 years, we'll study the agreement, and if we agree upon it, or there's a little minor modification, then we'll just, then we'll do amendments to it. Hold harmless language was changed to provide mutual obligations and restrictions. Notice language was updated. Exhibits were changed. We just made a more accurate map of what is the city of Treasure Islands, what is the city of St. Petersburg, and what is the city of St. Pete Beach. And those, yeah, those are the exhibits that we did. Exhibit D was changed, which is a pre-treatment agreement. We revised the language to provide for advanced notice to Treasure Island. If St. Pete believes Treasure Island's system is introducing any pollutants into the St. Petersburg system and is going to begin metering and charging the Treasure Island system. Meaning, if we, if they see that we're, let's say, mercury, an increase in mercury means that you have a dentist that is using mercury and they're pouring it down the drain. If they detect that, they'll come out and they can meter us and then charge us more for it. That, I think we have one dentist in town, he doesn't use it. And there's some other chemicals that they have. Exhibit E was added, inflow and infiltration agreement. The purpose was to cooperate to reduce unpermitted discharge of wastewater, preserve capacity, and plan for new and expanded services. So each year, I will put together a five-year plan of how we're going to combat INI. And that is all I have at this time.
Okay. Questions for Mike?
Did you mention in your summary, are they increasing our rates for this contract? And if so, by how much?
Okay, so each year, they increase our rates. It's between 5% and 15%. So each year, we go through a rate, they go through a rate study, they increase it. We then have to do what we call a pass-through. Their increase plus our increase, and then we have to, so each year, they increase it. You'll see an increase in the bill.
So how much is this increase going to be? Is it just for this specific gear?
Hasn't been set yet.
Hasn't been set yet.
It has not been set. It's going to be between 8% and 15%. It's more likely 10%.
So just like we set our rates for stormwater and garbage and other utilities, St. Petersburg City Council sets the rate for the sewer. So that's the rate that we get stuck with, and then we can charge our residents additional on top of that if needed to maintain the system. So it's kind of a two-part. So we're, there isn't a specific rate in this agreement.
No rate.
That's a separate act from the St. Petersburg City Council that determines our rate, or contributes to determining our rate.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Mike. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement for wastewater services with the city of St. Petersburg.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? Any public comment? All right. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Dr.
Aye.
Commissioner Minin.
Aye.
Commissioner Dickey.
Aye.
Commissioner Toth.
Aye.
Mayor Payne.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Item number eight, approve city manager purchase authority in the amount, total amount of $45,895.20 to Xylem Water Solutions USA, Inc. for a wet well pump at pump station number four.
Okay, as you're aware, the city of Treasure Island has 10 lift stations and two master pump stations. We have the main master pump station over here, over by the rally, right behind there. That's our, we call it master pump station. The other master pump station we have, we call pump station number four. That's in Paradise Island. That is the pump station that requires a new pump. During preventive maintenance and our routine inspections, we found that the, it's called the volute, volute or volute. It's the bottom portion of the pump. So you have a volute, which is the pumping portion of it, then you have the motor on the top of it. The volute and the motor itself, due to about eight, nine years of continuous operation, continuous meaning, they, we have three pumps in there, they each run on enough. One pump comes on, runs it the cycle, it turns off. The next pump comes on, it turns off. So it rotates through the three pumps. Well, on number three pump, it started to have more of a shaking. It had some problems with it, amperages and things like that. So we pulled it out, found out we had damage, and it needs to be replaced. There's three pumps in there. During the heaviest rainfall events and the heavy usage, we've only required to have two. Right now, we only have two right in the system right now. So this is a pump that we need to get as fast as possible and put in. But we do not see that, you know, we haven't seen that since the last couple of months. I think we found out in May, end of April, May, that this pump had an issue. So it's not been in operation since, let's say, two months. So we have not seen any problems with it. We do have an emergency pump state, an emergency bypass pump. If you've driven by there on Paradise Island Drive, or, yeah, Paradise Island Drive, you'll see that that blue pump is sitting outside. That is there in case that we do lose another pump, that we have a bypass capability. And I'll take any questions.
All right. Any questions for Mike?
It's a good thing it's been dry for a little while.
And this is, we have the funding in this?
Correct.
For this budgeted?
Yes.
And that pump was last replaced in 2016?
I believe so, yes.
That's what it says in the analysis.
Yeah.
So it's got a decent service in it.
Yeah, they're, they should last five years. We've gotten probably eight to nine years out of it because we rehabbed that pump station back in 2016, I think. So during the rehab, we replace all the pumps.
That's the station in the Triangle Park?
That is correct. And that's another one-
Not your Triangle Park. Our Triangle Park.
The other Triangle Park.
But that's a, that's another place where we have a meter, so we have two meters in master pump station and pump station number four.
All right. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve city manager purchase authority of $45,895.20 for a wet well pump purchased to Xylem Water Solutions USA, Inc.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Any public comment? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Dr.
Aye.
Commissioner Minin.
Aye.
Commissioner Dickey.
Aye.
Commissioner Toth.
Aye.
Mayor Payne.
Aye. Thank you. All right. Last item is number nine, motion or authorization of the city manager for the execution of purchase order to B&amp;B Roadway and Security Solutions LLC for the purchase of two pedestrian warning gates for the Baskiel Bridge in the amount of $44,220.
All right. The construction of the Baskiel Bridge was completed in 2007. That's about 17 years ago. During the 17 years, we do a lot of preventive maintenance, a lot of inspection, a lot of corrective actions on components of the bridge to extend their life. One of the things that we do, again, is we identify things that are failing, we fix them so that we can extend the life of all of our components that are on the bridge. We do that through an asset management system. So each component that we have on the bridge has a routine inspection that we go through and has preventive maintenance. It's my bedtime. So we have this real robust preventive maintenance plan using City Works. I'm sure I bragged about City Works to you before. So during our inspections, we find problems before they actually cause delays in the bridge operation, right? So we go out there, we run through checks and balances on it, we routinely open and shut the bridge so that everything is working coordinated. Because if one thing on the bridge doesn't work, the bridge does not open up or it does not close. That's how the whole system works, through a control system, which is run by a program logic controller. So it's a very detailed system, and it's, first of all, it's for reliability, and it's also for ease of operation for our bridge tenders. So during our routine inspections, we fix these things on a constant basis. Fixing them, meaning it looks like this is rusting out, the wires are done, the gears are needed greasing, limit switches need to be adjusted or repaired and, or replaced. The last time we inspected these two pedestrian safety gates, pedestrian warning gates, there, we started to see a lot more wear than we were comfortable with. What we don't want to do is get into a circumstance that we have the bridge up and we can't get the pedestrian gates to work, and we can't get traffic across. And I got to send mechanics out at 1:00 a.m. in the morning so we can get traffic going. So what we do is we just look at, we start looking at the history of that components, the components, and we say, okay, it's time to replace this component. It's now time to replace the pedestrian gates. The reason why some of, you know, there may be a look and say, wow, $22,000 for a pedestrian gate. Well, first of all, what are we looking at? We're looking at reliability, we're looking at how it operates. This pedestrian warning gate has probably operated over 25,000 times and has not been the cause of a non-opening, okay? So we have prevented delays, we have prevented a lot of people getting stuck on either side of the bridge. It's now time for those to be replaced. And for all the reasons that I've talked about before, is reliability. The other thing is that they're custom-built for this bridge that we have. This bridge is a custom bridge. There's only one other one just like it, and it's very costly. It's a $55 million bridge. And if you compare that to $22,000, it doesn't seem to be that high in my mind.
I remember hearing the stories about the military buying toilet seats for $5,000. And we got our $22,000 pedestrian warning gate.
Well, I think it's better than a toilet. It's a very reliable piece of equipment. We've spent a lot of money on that bridge. We spend about $900,000 on that bridge a year to maintain it, to keep it operational. In the next three to five years, we're going to spend about $6 million on that bridge. And you'll see it during our budgeting process. So do not get shit, do not get sticker shocked. Because I'm telling you, keeping a bridge operational is very expensive. Bob, you remember, I'm sorry, Commissioner Minin, you remember the $1 million painting job? Well, that $1 million painting job is now about $1.7 million.
We got a deal.
Lucky us.
Exactly. Exactly. But this, this bridge over 17 years is in very good shape. It's one of the best ones that I've seen. When the state comes down and they do their yearly inspections, they're very impressed on how well we keep it. You guys are all invited to go look at what a very nicely, very well-kept, very well-maintained bridge. Because again, it is our largest and most expensive asset in the city. And I'll take questions.
Any questions?
Yeah. Question. Is there no other contractor that can supply this?
Okay, it's not a contractor. This is, this is a, this is a custom-built.
Okay. There are other people who make custom-built stuff?
Yes, there are. Yes.
Have we, is it worthwhile going out? I mean, that's sort of an effect.
I don't think so. I don't think it's, I think what we do is we use a company that is well-established that makes these things. They build, they build, they build these on order. So I have to order it. It's about a three-month process. I don't think, I, me shopping around for it, I think is, it's not going to save us any money. It was recommended by our consultant, Hardisty in Hanover. They found this group for us to custom-build it.
Did they build the first one for us?
I'm not 100% sure if it was this exact company, but I do believe, I mean, I do not know for sure if it is the actual, but what it does, though, is they build it for our spec, just like the original one was.
And we have the specs?
Yes.
We have the drawings for it?
Yes.
Okay.
I assume there are other potential vendors out there that-
There are probably, yep.
Okay. We're not at public comment yet. We'll get there. Any other questions for Mike?
No. I've been inside the bridge and saw the safety mechanisms, and if that's what it takes to keep people safe, that's essential.
All right. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve-
After the motion.
I move to approve and authorize the city manager to approve a purchase order to B&amp;B Roadway and Security Solutions LLC for supplying two pedestrian warning gates for the Baskiel Bridge in the amount of $44,220.
Second.
Any further comments or discussion?
No.
Any public comment?
My name is Ronald DiBiase, and I reside in the Isle of Palms. I'm not sure if all of you have been here long enough, but I'm sure this gentleman here has been. Years ago, when we had the toll booth on the bridge, we were sold a bill of goods that if we took the toll booth down, that we would never have to pay any repairs for that bridge for as long as it was there. Now, in that, either the federal government or the state, I don't know who they made to deal with, I don't remember, but I'm questioning if this gentleman here remembers that when they took the toll down, we were never to incur any expenses.
I wasn't here during that time.
You weren't here?
No.
How about you, Mr. Minin, were you here?
If you can state your questions in the form of a comment, we'll let you conclude, and then if anyone wants to answer, respond to them.
Okay. Well, if anybody would like to comment on that, that knows about it, I would appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Any further, anything to add?
Yeah, I'll just comment. I was here at that time. The grant was given by our Congressman, Bill Young, who arranged for it. Mary Malouf was mayor at the time. Everybody was elated that we got the $55 million to build our Taj Mahal Bridge. Damn the maintenance. But I believe that in that contract or in that grant from the government, that the city was liable for maintenance. I think that's the way it was stated. So we knew upfront, and there were discussions going upfront, you know, do we keep it and charge tolls? Do we take the grant and suck up the money for maintenance? But those were the two alternatives, and the city said, let's take the grant.
The other, what you may be thinking of is there's, has been, there's nothing on paper in the grant.
on paper in the grant paperwork or official documentation, but there are some newspaper articles covering the story of what is commonly referred to as a gentleman's agreement between Congressman Young and the city at the time, that he would do everything that he could to fight for federal appropriations to pay for the maintenance moving forward. But there wasn't any sort of legal promise for that. It was more so a gentleman's agreement that they would help us do that. And then Congressman Young passed away, and that promise wasn't able to be kept. And also shortly thereafter, they, we got the bridge funding through an earmark, and shortly thereafter, they got, they stopped doing earmarks altogether. So that was his proposed, that was his plan to get us the funding, was to continue adding earmarks for us. But the federal government stopped doing that. So those are some of the reasons why that is there. And there was also a gentleman's agreement that we would not put a toll back on the, on the bridge as well. So those are the things that we're kind of working with. And we're doing everything that we can still, we have federal lobbyists to this day that are always talking to people in DC about any opportunities that we might have to get, secure more funding to help with the maintenance of the bridge. But it's, it's not, doesn't really work. We've explored a lot of opportunities and had a lot of conversations about it. So we, now, our strategy is we use our lobbyists to get funding for other things that the city needs that are more reasonable to, or more available for us to get, more winnable. So we've gotten a lot of funding for our sewer system and our roadways and things that we weren't getting before. So we get that funding in, and that kind of is able to offset what we have to spend on the bridge.
Any other comments before we vote?
Good one.
All right, thank you. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Doctor?
Aye.
Commissioner Minin?
Aye.
Commissioner Dickey?
Aye.
Commissioner Toth?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
All right, thank you. That is our last item of business. Can we just do city manager and city attorney reports before we adjourn? And does that work for your system, Celine? Do you need a break or anything?
I'll make a note in the minutes that we just continued.
Okay, all right.
I don't have anything to report tonight.
All right.
I don't have a lot. Most of it, we've covered with this action-packed agenda. So I appreciate all the support. I particularly appreciate the fact that, that you were willing to understand what it was that we were talking about with the connectivity plan and subsequently the Gulf Boulevard safety study portion of it. The only thing I can be absolutely sure of in any of you who have ever dealt with FDOT is if we didn't have a plan, we wouldn't have a seat at the table. And so this has, and DOT is very, very good, as is Forward Pinellas, of including us when these things are happening as a result of our willingness to sit down with them and work through these issues. Same thing with St. Pete Beach, so that's, that's a big deal. Again, I apologize for the problem with the, with the ordinance. We'll get that fixed and get it right back to you. concludes my comments.
All right, thank you. Can you give us a brief update on our plan for tomorrow, when we need to be here, scheduling?
Sure.
For the city manager selection?
The day, in essence, will kick off with the staff tomorrow at 7:30, where we're going to do panel-type interviews with the individual candidates over the course of the morning. We're asking you all to come in around 11:30 and join us for lunch. And then the afternoon is going to have them doing tours, that the staff is going to, that the staff is going to take them on individual tours. And then the evening is, is the meet and greet, starts at 6 o'clock, from 6 to 8 o'clock, upstairs in the promenade room. Thursday morning is also a very early morning, including you all, where we're going to convene at about 7:30. You all are going to convene as a body, at which time you will interview each of the individual candidates by themselves, either to give a brief little presentation, and then you will be interviewing. They have allotted, or Doug has allotted, about an hour and a half per candidate. You may or may not use all that. Knowing you, like I do, I would find it hard to believe that you will use all that time, but, but you may. And you certainly feel, need to feel comfortable doing that. At the conclusion of those interviews, again, there will be, there'll be another lunch, reconvene, and then you will get together as the commission again, and, and if you're able, make, make a selection.
All right. Just to clarify, we have lunch tomorrow at 11:30, and then we have our one-on-ones with the candidates after that in the afternoon, right?
Yes.
Okay, and then the meet and greet. All right, any questions on that? All right. Anything else? All right, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.